This fund, with the change in cash, was a couple of things behind the scenes. We did have loan proceeds coming in and going out. Because this includes the TIP fund too, in here, alright? So, those were about equal though. So, it didn't really cause a swing in cash. We just had loan proceeds in and then money spent on the project for the development. But we did have a few transfers in coming into this fund, you know, about net twenty thousand dollars. And so that's why the net income is a little different than the change in cash, but not much. The revenues, you can see there, had a little bit of a spike. It's up thirty thousand over the prior year. And that was mostly the TIP property package. That was up twenty-four thousand of that third. Everything else was just small swings. And you can see the expenses were fairly level, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand to two hundred and three thousand between the two years. You look at the next fund, it's the water fund. So, the water fund and the sewer fund, which we'll talk after this one, have quite a bit going on, of course, because we have a big project that you guys were speaking of earlier. This fund here, the water fund, had an end cash balance of just under sixty thousand. That's a decrease of seventy-one thousand from the prior year. We did have a net income though in this fund of twenty-eight thousand. So, obviously, some things are happening behind the scenes with transfers in the project, you know, that caused the rest of the change in cash. So, this fund had the twenty-eight thousand dollar net income, but we had eight hundred and six thousand of debt forgiveness and four hundred and forty-eight thousand of loan proceeds. Money, those are all monies coming in, so one point, a little over one point two million coming into this fund. And then, we had about one point three million going out on project cost plus other things, you know, equipment. And that all reconciles to that change in cash. Revenues, you can see, are up a little bit in this fund, by about twelve thousand dollars. We did have a small rate increase the year before, so we did expect a small bump in the revenue. On the expense side, you can see a decrease in expenses from the red bar twenty-four to the green bar twenty-five. About thirty-three thousand dollars decrease. Most, all of that was repairs and maintenance, which is down from the year before. Some years, you know, that, I mean, that varies widely from year to year depending on what, all you got going on and what needs fixing. So, if you flip to the sewer fund, cash on hand, one point nine million, up a hundred and sixty-eight thousand from the year before. We had a sixty-eight thousand dollar net income, so that's some of the reason why there was an increase in cash. But the rest is some of this stuff going on behind the scenes, like in the other funds. We did have transfers coming into this fund. I talked about that earlier with the non-home rule money that was transferred in, you know, transferred out and into one of the utility funds in this fund. So, that money's coming in, increasing our cash. We had two point eight million of loan proceeds come in to this fund for the project. And we paid about a hundred fifteen thousand of principal on debt, because our loan repayments had started on one of the loans, okay? And I'll point the loan activity out separately here in a little bit in the report itself. And we had about two point eight million of capital outlay, so money then we turned around and spent on the project. So, a lot of that's money in and money out. But it doesn't net zero, you know, that's why the change in cash is just a little bit different than the net income. On the revenue side, just a small bump there, about eleven thousand increase. Again, same reason as the water fund increased, because we had a small increase to our rates the year before. And then, on the expenses, you can see those were fairly leveled between the two years, one hundred and thirty-nine, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So, that is a recap of the financial activity in the city for the past fiscal year. But I want to go over a few other things, and then I want to point out some pages in the report here for you as well. So, as far as the water and sewer funds go, I always point this out to you each year, because you've got a lot of activity happening in those funds. Your net income and your cash reserves in total are fairly stable, down in the one fund a little, but up in the other funds. So, that's good. But you will want to continue to closely monitor your cash flow and your cash on hand, because you've got a lot going on, you know, you've got a lot of projects happening. And I know you've got those planned out and sourced out with the funds that you plan on using for those projects. But there could also be unexpected costly repairs, improvements that might pop up, totally unrelated to those projects as well. So, you'll definitely want to monitor your cash reserves, make rate adjustments as necessary. One other thing we look at each year for you is the percentage of gallons pumped versus billed. So, what we pump, treat, report to the EPA, versus what gets billed to the customers, which is not going to be a hundred percent for a lot of reasons. You know, meter errors, leaks, flushing, you know, different things like that. But we kind of track it just to make sure the percentage is fairly stable from year to year, and there's no major swings. And then, if there are, we make some inquiries, kind of try to figure out, you know, what happened if there was a major swing. But this past year, the percentage came in at seventy-one percent. And the prior three years before that was sixty to fifty-five percent. So, it actually bumped up a little bit, which is good. The higher the percentage, the better, unless you're losing, you know? And so, anyway, those percentages look good to me. As far as the report itself goes, we talked about the numbers, but I want to point out to you the reports that we issue. So, if you'll flip through the book, past the table of contents, you're going to see a couple of reports that are on our letterhead. In your case, we issue three separate reports. There's always two. But when you have a single audit, we have a third one that we have to issue. And so, all three of them are in here, and they're back to back. So, the first one, which is right after the table of contents, at the top, it says independent auditors' report. This is a report, which is four pages long, that states that we performed the audit and that we believe the numbers to be materially accurate. So, it's what's called a unmodified or a clean opinion. It's what granting agencies are looking for, the state, so forth, okay? So, that report is just a normal report. The next two pages is a report we issue every year. It's a government auditing standards report that we have to issue on internal controls and compliance. So, anytime we have any internal control-related issues that we need to report to the board or the readers or financial, it would be in here, as well as if there's any material non-compliance that we come across when we're doing the audit. Now, in years you don't have a single audit, I have the information right in this report, okay? But in years you have a single audit, we're required to have a separate schedule on it, okay? And so, you're going to find that back on page forty-nine, almost at the very end of the report. And this report references this page, okay, or this schedule. So, in the back, there are two things, one internal control item that we have to disclose and one compliance thing. So, you'll see there, at the top, segregation of duties, all of our smaller entities, which is ninety-plus percent of the ones that we audit, we have to disclose this. It's just the way small government is structured. Anytime you have one or two key people that do multiple accounting functions, like write payroll, do the bank reconciliation, deposit funds, and so forth, we have to disclose this. Now, you are separating a lot of stuff, you know? You have a separate person for the billing portion and so forth. And the board is closely monitoring the financial information and asking questions every month, which is great. Those are all what we call compensating controls that help reduce the risk, you know, that something would occur that is unintended. But, we still have to disclose it here, that you do have a couple of key people that do a lot of the accounting functions. There's not necessarily any action that you need to take on this, it's just kind of inherent with the size of entity that you are. But, you are already doing some things, like I said, to help lower the risk that something might be misstated or, you know, misused as far as an asset of the city. So, what you're doing, of course, is closely monitoring it yourselves. I know you have committees that meet, you go over the numbers, you look at invoices, you ask questions, and that's great. And then, when we do an audit of a small entity, we are doing extra testing as well. For example, we're making sure that the payroll amounts paid to those key people are the correct amounts, and they've been board approved. We're making sure that reimbursements to those key people have support for it, receipt, and so forth. And that those receipts have items on it that appear to have city permits, you know? So, we're doing testing, you guys continue to do what you're doing. But no changes necessarily or new actions required on your part, it's just your side, okay? Very common, like I said. And then, the second item we have is related to compliance. This is the most common compliance finding that we have to disclose, which is budget compliance. And we have to do it because the report has, I mean, it shows it in here, you know, that what your budget is and what you've spent. So, it's not like we can't not put it, they would see it anyway. But it's very common. In this case, it was in the TIP fund, and it was, you know, I think there was just a little confusion on, you know, do you or don't you need the budget for the expense if it's being covered by the loan proceeds, you know? But in government accounting, the loan proceeds in the financial statements show up as revenue, and the expense shows up as expense, so it's still an expense of the city. And we do need a budget for that, which I believe we did this year, we talked about it, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, so, that should be gone next year, and we would just have the segregation duty, which is as clean a report as you can get. And like I said, both of these particular disclosures are very common. I, you know, I don't think you're going to get any pushback from any entity over it. I know because you have the EPA stuff going on, and it's seen a lot of, they do look at it closely. And I think they send out a little letter every year about it, just saying, hey, we're aware of it. And I think their letter, I have a copy of it from last year in my file, basically just says that they're going to monitor you a little more closely than they would otherwise, which I'm not sure exactly what that means. But, I don't think it caused you any issues last year, is that correct? So, very clean report, very good report. So, let's flip all the way back again to the third report that we issue, which is on page seven and eight and nine. This is related to the single audit, okay? So, we only do this for you in those years that you have more than five hundred thousand of federal expenses. And this report basically says we did the single audit, and that we didn't come across any material compliance-related finding, you know, no question costs or anything like that. So, this is unmodified, or unmodified clean, what they're looking for as well. So, it's a very good report, very clean report. As far as the single audit goes, you can find that information back in the back again on page forty-six. So, page forty-six has a listing of the federal revenues and federal expenditures that you've had into fiscal year twenty-five. And you can see, in twenty-four, we had a single audit as well. You can see there, we had a little over three million, and then in twenty-five, a little over one million. Now, how do we know how much federal revenue you knew you had? Well, EPA tells us. Because, you know, you get these loan proceeds and the debt forgiveness, and when you're getting it, you don't really know what kind of money it is, if it's state or if it's federal or otherwise. But we work closely with them during the audit time, and we talk to them, we get confirmation sent to us of the exact breakdown of your revenue and your expenses for these programs. So, you can see there, we had three different things happening. We had the FEMA money, which was federal, and then we had the EPA stuff happening with the debt forgiveness and the loan proceeds. And then, the last thing I want to point out to you in the report itself is on page thirty. So, page thirty, midway down on the page, is a little recap of your debt activity, okay? So, this is where you're going to find it. And you'll see there, the governmental activities, that would be on, you know, from the local bank here for the infrastructure development project that you have going on. And it shows there, your balances at the end of the year, about one million seventy-two thousand, okay, at the end of the year. And then, for the water loan through the EPA, you had three that had a balance, and then you had one that hasn't started yet, but it's going to be happening this year, okay? So, I went ahead and put it on there just to show it. And those are your balances there, the three point five million, two of them, and then four hundred and forty-eight thousand. And then, you can see a reduction, decrease of a hundred and fourteen thousand. I mentioned earlier, we did start repaying one of those loans, that's the one we started repaying. But if you flip the page, the next couple of pages has your schedule on it, okay? So, this shows you how much your payments are year by year for the next five years, and then in five-year increments after that. So, this first, these first two on page thirty-one is the land infrastructure stuff you have going on. So, that's not your water or sewer project, okay? But page thirty-two and thirty-three, those are your EPA loan. And you can see the very first one at the top, that one's all done, and the three point five million principal total matches the schedule, okay? But the next three are all in process. And so, that's why you'll see at the bottom of each one of those, what the total loan is going to be, minus what has not been dispersed yet, to equal what the loan on your books is, okay? So, it kind of reconciles it. And so, this kind of shows what's going to happen on those three loans during fiscal year twenty-five. And the loan repayment schedules for those three that aren't quite complete yet, and you've not started making payments on, these are estimated based off the interest rates. We had to run our own amortization schedule, because we're not provided one by EPA until the project is completed. So, when I'm here next year, these three should all be then exact. They're going to be very close to this, but it'll be more exact, okay? Because this is all estimations on when you're going to start repaying it and when the final projects are going to be done, because as he said earlier, the clock starts ticking six months when the projects are done, and that's when repayments start. And then, the last thing I was going to mention to you is, I always highlight for you any other recommendations that we have that aren't in the report, there isn't, you know, recommendation. And we really didn't come across much during the audit. Everything that we were looking for, we found, we didn't come across any kind of issues. And the only thing we found was a couple of mileage reimbursements to employees. We noted the two of them that we looked at. We had all the support we needed, but there was a couple of them that didn't have the approval signature like all the rest did. And so, we're just suggesting that we make sure that we get those signatures for approval on all those mileage reimbursement forms, especially since it involves employee, you know, we're always looking at those closely. So, very good, very clean audit. You know, of course, we look at everything on a test basis, we're not looking at a hundred percent of all the transactions. We're looking at all the material transactions, we're randomly selecting other transactions, and everything we selected to test, found the support that we needed for it, and the process went very smooth. And I want to say that everyone involved, the treasurer, the link clerk, the clerk, the mayor, the superintendent, were very helpful through the process, brought us all the information we asked for, got it forced timely, were very accommodating. And we certainly appreciated all their help and efforts as well. That being said, I'll open it up to any questions. That's a lot to absorb. If you think of anything later, just let me know. My contact information is on the letterhead, which, there's three of them in here, so you all have it. Just send me an email if you have questions at a later date, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much, Adam.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Amy, quick. Okay, motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five audit. Hey, Roco.
Porter. Palmer. Solomon. Bradshaw.
Motion to approve the invoice of sewer Peterford plumbing disbursement, casting invoice. Motion to approve the sewer, five thousand forty-two, five hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight cents. Peterford plumbing disbursement, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Castings invoice, and total, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy cents. Hey, Roco.
Palmer. Bradshaw. Nelson. Porter. Solomon.
Hey, motion to approve change order of sewer, hundred and eighty dollars and eighteen cents.
Make motion to change order of sewer for one hundred and eighty dollars and eighteen cents. Solomon. Nelson. Porter. Bradshaw.
Hey, motion to approve the invoice of water treatment plan. Verdict, plumbing dispersment, hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents. Castings invoice, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Total, hundred and fifty-three thousand, hundred and ninety-eight dollars and five cents. Hey, Roco.
Solomon. Porter. Palmer. Nelson. Bradshaw.
Hey, motion to approve invoice of water lead service line, Petersburg plumbing dispersment, hundred and twenty-two thousand, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Casting invoice, two thousand, three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Total, hundred and twenty-four thousand, eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll second it.
Hey, Roco.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Murray. Nelson. Palmer. Porter.
Motion to approve invoice for water main project, Petersburg plumbing dispersment, thirty thousand, seventy-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Castings invoice, three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Total, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Hey, Roco.
Nelson. Bradshaw. Porter. Palmer.
Motion to approve change order of water, minus six thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and three cents. Hey, Roco.
Nelson. Bradshaw. Solomon. Palmer. Porter.
Hey, motion to approve two-year service plan of water testing, nothing, two thousand dollars. Roco.
Solomon. Porter. Palmer. Nelson.
Motion to approve, two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars for water system repair.
Palmer. Nelson. Porter. Bradshaw.
Hey, discussion, action, and necessary of sanitary sewer system, base two project items as properly brought to the board. Let's see, we'll just drop down to discussion, action, and necessary of back smaller subdivision. I talked to Mark this morning. He's going to have a rock haul in sometime in July, so we'd be ready to oil it and rock it. That's the only thing I know about that one. Nobody's, nobody's wanting to buy anything yet, but we're keep trying.
Where are we at on the moment?
It's getting close. We pay volunteers, John's been real busy, so, maybe I can take him along to get to it. So, we want to try to tag with something, go piece of it, that's fine.
Maybe push all the way, where are they right now or not?
It's, it's pretty much level, you can push all good, if you have some good or, uh, upfront, it's all pretty smooth. And you could actually take it a little more, but it's not a problem.
And we got two, three more months to get there.
Bro. As soon as John gets that spring and all that, he said he'll, he can buy it in the end or up on it.
Do you mean, you know, the, uh, our idea, are we moving back there or?
Oh, that backflow one? I was supposedly, they supposedly had, uh, got it on.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
Yeah, we both, we both, we're the first to buy it.
Oh, just bond, of course, we still be in August. So, whoever buys it in August, or if they fail, whatever they now, they're liable to stop on that, but it was only a couple of months after that.
Yeah, we know, bond, right, because all the known.
Correct.
So, we put the shoes on that, to make sure it's, it's, it looks like on, only on that, so, I just want to get to it. It's a smooth, I noticed it, you know, for the D mode, it's, I don't know that one though, that they set it up for you to do that.
Oh, we did, and then they paid us.
They already paid us.
Because they ended up not having, so I have a, all of our money blocked, but they didn't have a set, so.
Oh.
Yeah, but I tried calling him and.
I got nowhere.
Yeah. And he, he paid us electronically to the city. He won't pay anything else.
Hey, I even know the, wait, the public comment, make any public comment? Donnie Moore.
I have a couple of questions. They did refill in their well, they didn't fill in, I think, they used the, I can't name them, it's a toll on front streets here, but. There was a water main on the east side of my property there, and they. There were the water main on the east side of my property there, and they seeded it, put down the mat on that. They didn't go ahead and do a cross on the south on Illinois Street there. It, it's, the dip's not as bad there, but it is still there. And they, I know the name of the contractor, but he was...
Anyway.
Harley Ray. Harley Ray, thank you. But it don't do that great, to be honest, I'll be honest. I mean, I've been busy for a long time. And it, they picked all the dirt up off there before, so it's settled naturally, and that's fine, I know, no problem. I just wondered, they did that other one, I don't know, a few days ago, if they were gonna come back and do the, the one on Illinois, on the south, or not. I mean, hell, I don't care if they don't. I'll get black, dump a little black dirt off, y'all do it themselves, I don't care. But also one of the water meter housing, shut off the test housings that are adjustable. Sticking up about that far, so they put some dirt around it, just right around it. Looks like they drove over with a truck or something, maybe trying to get it pushed down, it didn't go down. But it should thread down, unless it's bottomed out. If not, I'm sure I'd take my tractor and chub it down, but I don't think we'll do that, or we'll do that. I understand, I put in a ton, I know what they're hiding. But it needs to be screwed down, or, like I said, if they want to bring some more black dirt in, raise it up that corner, or... No, if they're already, I don't care.
You say that to the apartment building?
No, my house.
So the meter is on your, on your apartment, or is it the apartment building?
Or his house, his, first of all.
It's not the meter, it's the, the ones that cast, shut off housings. And, and they're adjustable, you can crank them down, they're up to adjust them. And it was sticking up, there's two of them there, that one's down, nice, but that one, they put a little bit of dirt around it, more goes over it.
I misunderstood, I thought you said something about the apartment building.
No, 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 no.
What's your answer?
Three or four East Illinois Street? I'm not pushing or anything, I was just curious, but they did the one, I didn't know if they're gonna do the other or not. Not complaining about it, I'm just curious if they're gonna do it or not. And then the other thing, the asphalt team was in town, but I still haven't asphalt, run my shop, I done it up a couple years ago. Are they planning on doing that this year?
Yes, matter of fact, they should be out doing some of the last patches between Marla, Mono, and between that.
Okay, and that's fine, I mean...
Which, which we had some conversation before here, and I think it was on one of the, the other board meetings, about your oil and ship here. The schedule that's set in place and the packing that has to go on with sewer packing will not infringe on the oil and ship here. Yes, they are gonna, there's more packing, Romero will be out here today or tomorrow, about noon. And I'm gonna address him what these issues have, and get him on the schedule, and that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'd like to have them this summer if I could, it's been that way for a couple of years now or more. I'm not jumping up and down, I just wondered if we're gonna get to it this year.
And that's with, with you saying something, I'll have them go back and review it.
Okay, so we're getting close to the end of the project this season. The way that they measured it last fall, my brother said, but I figured it was getting close enough into the fall that it was gonna be too cold. So I didn't figure they were gonna do it in the, in December, my building burned down, and the process getting it built. And so I, I mean, I haven't been too concerned or worried that they gotta get in there immediately and get it done, but I just curious if we can get this year before it got cold. It was all I had to do, it was scary.
Yes, you, you guys should be able to hail end of this, because you probably...
And that's fine.
Right up, right quick.
Okay, I mean, no, except, mostly this summer, I'm okay, I mean, I'll have somebody take a look at it. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you, no problem.
Any other?